Uh, Dr. B, um, if you don't feel comfortable about voting on those minutes since you weren't here and you haven't watched the meetings, you can abstain because you weren't here, but it's completely up to you.
Okay. It's still as you do.
I didn't, I didn't read through the new rule.
Okay, cool, cool.
Yeah.
Well, I think you were uncomfortable. I mean, if you kind of get the gist, yeah.
Thanks three months ago for the meetings.
There's March, okay.
You're good?
Perfect. We're live. Okay, we're live, so uh, I will call the meeting to order. Um, where I'm seven oh. Six thirty-three, sorry. As every roll call. Uh, Chair Kerr, I'm here. Steven Building.
Here.
Welcome. We'll get back to you in a minute. Carl. No, Carl.
Miola.
Here.
And Dine, do we, yeah.
Here.
Thank you. Well, welcome one and all. Uh. So we've got the roll call, public comment items out on this agenda, I think though, before we launch into our meeting. We have a new face. Steven Building, it sounds like.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, well, I guess brief introductions are in order, so if you want to start off, that's fine.
We'll be happy to start off. Uh, name's Stephen Building or Steven or Steve. Steve is my informal name, so that is fine. Um, I just moved into town about a year and a half ago. Uh, my wife works for Nike. We were down in Tennessee uh, from twenty seventeen to twenty-one, but apart from that, I've sixty-one, my sixty-five years in Oregon, in Portland area. Uh, we moved out here to Lafayette. We love the area. We wanted to retire in this area. Uh, so I am retired, but if you call, I work for Abbey Road Farm Winery in the tasting room. Uh, I'm full-time there. So that is my, my uh retirement job. Um, I've got background as a business owner, as a college professor. Um, also worked on the Southwest Corridor project um, in Portland before I headed off to Tennessee. Uh, they're steering committee with that. Uh, but by the way, I would like to get involved. Um, yes, I'm gonna be probably staying here till the day I die, so. Be involved with this. So I'm happy to be here, happy to contribute when I can, uh, and look forward to work with all of you.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm John Miola. I've lived in Lafayette since twenty twenty. Um, prior to that, came from up from Snowmack County, another wine country. I work in the wine business now for uh Domain De Bruy, where the base room that burned down a couple years ago now. Um, and I just want to be on the planning commission to help out as much as I can and see this town succeed.
And my name is Ron Kerr. Uh, full name is Ronald, but I go by Ron, so. Informal. Uh, lived in Lafayette with my better half since two thousand five. Been on the planning commission since two thousand five in some manner, shape, or form, joined with the idea of contributing and doing what I can to both shape the present and future of our community here. And currently I work for ODOT and past lives. I've done engineering, financial services and planning. Uh, business ownership. I native originally, I should say, grew up in Kansas. Was in Southern California for a while and had the opportunity to come up here, so. That's how I ended up in this corner of the world.
So beautiful corner of the world.
Well, that's true.
I'm Jordan Van Tien. I moved, I'm an Oregonian. I've spent a lot of my years in Los Angeles, working in the film business. Doing hair and makeup for movies and television and that sort of thing. I was working on a show up here and I decided to move back to Yamhill County. I'd lived here prior and that was into twenty fifteen. And I moved to Lafayette. I wanted to get to know my community and try to contribute, so I joined the budget committee and then the planning commission and I'm also on the downtown facade committee and I run a five oh one C three nonprofit. We help uh cancer patients with their treatments. And to help take care of their pets while they're in treatment. We help senior citizens and we hire the local kids that need guidance to work with the dogs and it gives them a nice safe place to be because there's a lot of kids that need help and we teach them all sorts of skills that they can carry through for the rest of their life.
Um, and Chair Kerr, I do want to let you know, um, at the last city council meeting, um, previous planning commissioner Chris Mead has resigned from the planning commission affected the last city council meeting. So, um, we were close to being a full board. Um, so now we, um, we have one more spot we'll, we'll need to fill. So we are too, too short for a full board.
Okay. And. You probably met Brandon then?
I have.
Okay, we've had some great talks. We had a little onboarding, uh, about a month ago.
About a month ago, yeah.
Okay. That answers that question. So with the informalities, but all the always necessary, let's get to know our fellow commissioners. Uh, we'll dive into tonight's meeting and then we're going to go public comment items out of this agenda, but there's nobody in the public. Anybody out there?
Is this something YouTube land? This is preparing live stream. Does that mean we're not?
No, this is live in the corner here, Mike.
Yeah. This is live in the corner. Okay. So there, since I keep our comments, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read back to the October twenty twenty-two minutes? Actually remember what went on? Did you find anything? That needed to be commented on, corrections? No, then.
We're not finding anything.
Do I? Do I have a motion to adopt the October twentieth meeting minutes?
I will motion to adopt the October twenty twenty-two minutes.
On your second pick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And similar story situation, the February sixteenth meeting minutes. Uh, did everybody get a chance to read them over and are there any comments to the either negatory or correction?
Nothing.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we adopt the February sixteen twenty twenty meeting minutes. Or approve them.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prove. And for March sixteenth twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, same story. Anything look out of order or needs to be corrected? Then I will make the motion to adopt or approve the March sixteen twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. All in favor? Or well?
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair, just for the record, we have, um, Chair, you made the motion, um, Mr. Building. Which is always gonna be funny saying that, that the building made the second correct and then, yeah, okay, thank you.
Just. Okay. We have new business. It looks like it is going to be a discussion. Work session with discussion on mending or looking at the Lafayette Development Code related to regulating retail marijuana establishments. And we have a brief report, background, financial impact. Looks like we have a couple of maps to look at, so. Based on and Jim's not here, so, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be leading the discussion on this.
Okay, well, then, take it away, Brandon.
All right, thank you, Chair. So to give you some background on why we're here today, um, I started in January and we've had a couple of calls, um, regarding, um, retail cannabis marijuana dispensaries in town. Um, and currently right now, um, in front of you is the thousand foot barrier map that we have that we're currently operating. Um, all three of these members, we've shared them where they can operate and, um, they said, okay, well, let us know if it gets, if it gets to a point where they change. Numerous phone calls happened. I said, okay, we've had three phone calls now. At least they bring us to the city council, to the policymakers. Is there an appetite to at least look at, um, maybe scaling back the, the buffers, um, and having a discussion with the planning commission? They agreed to pass this to the planning commission and staff to look at the current buffers, um, what the state guidance is, and then also, um, bring something back after we have the public hearing. So, um, I'd like to kind of go over the maps. Um, I think after those maps, if there's any, any questions, I can kind of hopefully navigate them. Um, and hopefully at the end of this, uh, new business discussion, we can set the date, the public hearing for October. So regarding the maps, um, currently you have Lafayette schools and park location, thousand foot barrier. You have a couple of five hundred foot barriers, one that has just the daycare locations and schools. One that has schools and parks. Um, and city facilities. And then you have two separate ones, which are gonna deal primarily with the state law. So, uh, before we go into our current buffers, the state law only requires a one thousand foot barrier around an elementary school. Um, that can be subject to a five hundred foot barrier if there are major barriers and obstructions to prevent you from getting to that one thousand feet. So, uh, we've discussed that internally, um, if, if that was a planning commission's wish, um. If you go from a thousand to five hundred, honestly, I don't think there's much difference because the commercial district isn't really touched. Um, so I think a thousand foot would be appropriate in this, uh, in this instance. So right now, where we currently are at, which is gonna be the one thousand foot barrier with all the green circles and all the beige circles. So when the city, um, adopted to allow the state shed revenue, um, when, when recreational marijuana, um, was voted in by the, the resident of Oregon, I, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Um, all the cities had to, uh, adopt if they wanted to, to take part of the state shed revenue, which, uh, it's minimal three percent. Um. So the city allowed it, but with, at that time, they, um, they placed where it can operate. So right, looking at this one thousand foot buffer, um, they wanted one thousand feet, the, a thousand feet between schools, city facilities, daycare and also parks. So by looking at this map, there's probably only one or two tracks, three tracks that you can probably, um, have a retail marijuana dispensary location. Um. Those are not viable options for people that we've talked to, and I think you all know, um, the, the few tracks of land, they probably, it wouldn't be possible. Um, so as a side step, as we get into this, a few things that, uh, we need to look at. Um, when I talked to OLCC about this and what it would look like and what needed to be done. Um, they did mention, which I mentioned to the city council, about twenty-five percent of Oregonians, uh, have admitted to partaking in, in cannabis products. Um, when I spoke with the council about, about it, I said, this is some of the reasoning why we should at least think about it. You know, there's people going out of town that we could kind of collect that tax revenue. We're a city of about, let's say, five thousand, give or take. You know, you think twenty-five to thirty percent of that, that's a good change of people who may be, we may be losing out monthly on, on sales tax revenue. Um, but it also shows that I think we're in, um, a position that we want to see, um, growth in the business corridor. Um, at least bringing opportunities for business owners to come in. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Um. So what we've provided to you as well is if we wanted to scale back to just one thousand foot buffers, um, with the school right here. The big, this, this is the only state regulations that we have in play that we would have to follow. Um, if there were no regulations, no other items here with the, uh, with, uh, the city, this is the minimum requirement by the state. And you see that takes you pretty much all, all around Washer. Um, up, you know, east, you go in past our UGB. West, you have, uh, Jefferson. South, you're going Fortin Wilson. And north, you know, you're going to almost sixteenth and Grand. So that, that's sufficient barrier. Um, if you wanted to look at daycares, um, daycares, I think at the time, um, there were numerous daycares downtown and, um, at the time when they did, when they did the zoning for, um, I think education and the parks were, were in mind and, you know, um, that's great and I that was their prerogative. Um, we've had, we've had a daycare move out, um, into the residential area. Um, and when I spoke with the state, I asked them about the daycare. They say daycares are optional amongst, uh, planning commissions and city councils. Um. What, like I told the city council, the only reason why there's no barrier is because with daycares, they tend to be less than four to five years old. And I think, or I know, when, when it comes to the state regulation, that K through twelve, public education is when you see middle school, high schoolers when, um, those are the biggest barriers. Um, I think when they talk about, you know, juveniles and being, having access to, um, the commercial areas where um, marijuana or cannabis dispensaries are at. So the reason why we're here today is at least have a little discussion on it. Um, no major direction today outside of establishing a public hearing, which that would be the official vote today from the planning commission to formally establish a public hearing. Um, which would require thirty-five day notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development with the state. Meaning that there may be a zoning change and why we, why we mean a zoning change currently right now, the Lafayette, um, Code of Ordnance's Chapter Seven Business, uh, regulates marijuana dispensaries. After speaking with Jim Jacks and speaking to the state, it's best to probably take that into our, um, our zoning, uh, subdivision code, regulate, business regulation code, um, and take it out of the, um, city code mechanism. So by doing that, we would have to have a thirty-five day notice to provide to the state and to allow any resident or community member to come speak about that, and that would be that next item. So. So we have a bunch of maps in front of us. Um, I are there any questions? Are there any, um, items that maybe I can be better prepared for coming back to that next meeting?
Uh, just, uh, just observation.
Yeah, yes, yes.
And I go back to, you know, the states, as states action contains a one thousand foot limitation, it looks like it's roughly defined through A through twelve, which would be on the factor how much you'll, but that distance may be reduced to five hundred feet.
Yes.
See, there's a physical barrier. Okay.
Which is this map right here.
Right. So we got, you know, the idea is you operate the thousand foot mark or you operate at the five hundred foot mark, depending upon circumstances, conditions, and whether you have what you would call, what, what you would think of as a physical barrier or something that reduces the likelihood of access from these various locations. If I look at the thousand foot map overlay of the city and say, we can only do this within our commercial core based upon all the little green and orange circles. There is no place currently within the city of Lafayette that a dispensary could be located. Everything is, that whole commercial core is covered and therefore restricted from having a marijuana dispensary based on that thousand foot.
Outside of Bridge Loop, where there's two lots that are RC, which I, well, technically right now, they can only operate C one, C two. Um. According to Chapter Seven. So they, I mean, so technically.
I'm, 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 I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, uh, thousand foot.
Okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
On the five hundred foot, and we'll get to that. Yeah, I'm, I'm getting there.
Gotcha.
So.
My mistake, Chair. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Yeah, because I thought she had said that and it's like, hmm, just, you know, I want to, you ask for some help. I'll give you the benefits of what I catch, but keep in mind, I'm not perfect either.
Perfect.
Um, but like you say, yes, so the thousand foot buffer basically means we would not be able to entertain a dispensary at all.
Correct.
If we go to the five hundred foot buffer, yes, you are, then you are correct. If you go out on either the far extreme, uh, west side of town, heading out, what is Highway ninety-nine, there might be a couple of lots out there moving south that would at least fall within the potential to have a dispensary depending upon code, all, some of the underlying things. Say likewise, if you go to the east side of the our community, uh, along ninety-nine W, as you get to east, there might only be, uh, two or three or four lots where there could be something, again, depending upon other existing developments, et cetera. So we don't really have much. So then to me, the more fundamental question that I would ask the commission is and maybe, and I wouldn't want that money completely decide the equation, but we should consider that as well, uh, do we have any? If we don't have one question, do we have a way of coming up with an estimate of how much revenue sharing could come into Lafayette if we had something based on the experience of similar size communities in Oregon, if they have something like this. And more importantly, for us as a commission is do we want to entertain a marijuana dispensary in Lafayette? I agree with the concept of business development. I agree with the concept of personal choice. But there also, there'll be a lot of people out there saying, no, we don't want that. There'll be a lot of people out there saying, yes. So it's kind of like, it's like trying to take that personal opinion, et cetera, and mix it with what's out there and go, okay. What's going to be, what's gonna be best overall for the community and in such a way that we can have positive impacts? Minimizing or mitigating negative impacts. Because we know there's gonna be positive ending.
Yeah, that's everything, anything that we do. Um, and I, and I think that's what the council was looking for, because they, they, they looked at having the planning commission entertain, um, what the buffers would look like and.
So, so we could potentially, so here's a question. So we then could potentially mix and match buffers and say, okay, under the following locations, it could be a thousand foot buffer under the following locations. It could be a five hundred foot buffer. We're not restricted to one or the other. We probably don't want to get overly complicated. That always will drive ourselves nuts. But maybe there's something about one or two or even three sites where doing a mix and match would make sense.
Uh, I'll add to, add to that, Ron, um. If you were to go above the five hundred foot on just the daycares and schools, the map that has the minimal amount of squares highlighted.
All right, yeah. Yep. That's gonna be.
It's to your, I think, that one there.
That one right there. That one, perfect.
So on that one, if you were to, to go to the thousand foot even, then you still are pushed outside of the, uh, the commercial corridors. So mixing, matching, I would say could happen, but it wouldn't necessarily matter no matter what because the schools and the daycares, unless daycares are five hundred feet and schools are a thousand. They would push it outside of that, that corridor.
Yeah, and you could go, like you say, you could go to the thousand foot buffer just for the elementary school and they're gonna be outside of that corridor. The only thing that, you know, I suppose, well, and it's not likely to happen, is if somewhere along the line our commercial core would get expanded, say to what would be the approximate north side of where it is heading up toward, instead of being buffered on Fourth Street, if somehow it would end up being buffered on Fifth Street. But that's likely down the road a ways would be my idea. So.
Okay.
So your observation, basically, I like your observation from the perspective of it all boils down to, do we want to go down to, if we allow a five hundred foot buffer, that's the only way we could accommodate that, the business type in our community.
But as, as we mentioned earlier, state law only says K through twelve, so daycares don't even have to be included.
Correct. And that was the discussion we have at city council, and that's why I said, this, this is the only barrier the state says you have to have. So the daycare, um, like I mentioned, at the time, there were more daycares downtown. There was, um, so when they, when they factored in that zoning and the barriers, um, that was included. Um. We had, we, we had a, a lengthy discussion with city council on, on some of that. Um, but again, the day, um, like I've mentioned, uh, daycares, uh, aren't included in it, but that's completely up to, that's completely up to city council and, and you all, um. On, so at least you are suggesting what buffers may, may, maybe look at when going to the city council.
Um, yeah, and, and to jump in here, okay. To think of it maybe the next level. If we look at our city center, even the daycares will likely exclude things. Doesn't say anything about parks or parks. We could, you know. So yeah, schools, daycares and parks. Just to put three, three broad brackets. On the daycare side of things, okay. If I think of a product like marijuana, the most likely time where a person is going to develop an interest for that seems to be somewhere around the either teen or just before teen years, somewhere around ten, eleven, twelve, something like that. Daycares typically see the primary audience of a daycare tends to be from almost infant to very young.
Yeah.
They tend to be in a controlled environment anyhow. So.
Their parents come and pick them up and stuff.
Parents come and pick and take them up. Now, that doesn't mean they couldn't walk over their parents, but they're walking over their parents with family and they're, you know, or, or even, you know. So in that respect, even having no buffer around the daycare really is not going to have any significant impact on, shall we say, potential exposure as daycare users are not anywhere near even a secondary concern for that type of facility. So just the very nature of the animal says, I don't think we really need to be concerned about daycare. But if, if I were to sit down and look at it from that, that particular level, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have a buffer. I'm just saying if there wasn't one there, the risk of anything bad or nefarious going on is pretty slim.
Any thoughts?
You mentioned exposure for daycares. I would see that as minimal as well. But then we talk about public parks. Legally, you're not allowed to use marijuana products in public parks. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay. So.
The same thing for alcohol, too.
Sure.
And, and that even came up, um, in the city council meetings. So, well, uh, one of the counselors had mentioned the, uh, well, what about parks? Like, well, you can, you can drink in a park, but if somebody wants to drink in a park, they're gonna drink in a park and they're gonna get a ticket. You know, and I know obviously there's some state laws right now that are gonna kind of walk you with what you can, cannot do in public. But here in Lafayette, um, any of that stuff is, is not allowable in parks. So.
So even, but even a park, even if the park itself had no buffer. And we just looked at it and we made the interpretation of, okay, you can't use.
Right.
There are always gonna be people that if they want to use, they're gonna use and you can't stop that. That's that, doesn't matter whether you got a buffer there or not.
Fair assumption.
So that's, but for those people that are going to sit down and say, okay, it says I can't. You know, they'll comply. Uh. Then again, a buffer around, then it was as a buffer around the park. Does that serve any real purpose? And if we say there's a buffer around the park, okay, here's the counterpoint here, and here's a step to that argument, too. I just thought, if we say there's a thousand foot buffer around that park, what do we do about the users? And we'll assume that there are some there that are using and they are on their own private property. I can understand if a person cannot drink a beer standing out on the sidewalk because that's public property. I have had, the occasional neighbor may comment that even if they are on their sidewalk or, or not sidewalk, but their driveway or front yard, which is clearly their property, consuming a beer. They have at least had comment. So that starts getting, going down the path of, you know, I, I, I would not want to put something in place that would restrict the right of a person to consume. The only way I would then want to sit down and say, hey, yeah, let's do a five hundred foot buffer, a thousand, uh, around a park is it's a thousand foot buffer on the park, but that only applies to users that would be within the public right of way.
One real quick thing, we're talking about the sale of marijuana.
Correct, yeah. Some shit and sale are gonna be. Correct, yeah. Some shit and sale are gonna be a lot different. Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't think we'd have the space for, I mean, at least right now, uh, there's no appetite for any industrial. Or, or, you know, wholesale. I think all the calls that we've had is just an interest in retail.
Okay.
Um, and I would assume, one person I talked, you mentioned, you know, like the edibles and oils and all cream, so it's. It's not just gonna be, I would say, inhalation product. It would probably be things that most people would consume at home. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or they might consume while they're walking down the street, but yeah. You're probably never gonna know that. Cause you know, a chocolate bar is gonna look like a chocolate bar unless you're like, you know, examining it. And chances are it'll be long gone before. So, okay, so this is only talking about. Uh, the, 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 the facilities that are actually going to sell.
Correct.
And it would have to be in commercial corridor?
Right now, right now, if anybody were to operate a, 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 a dispensary, it would have to be in C one, C two.
Right.
Um, and that's why I think that guidance would probably wanna stay if you decide what the, what those buffers would look like to bring to the city council. But I also, um. Yeah, yeah.
So it opens a question of, there's the RC, so C one, C two, they're both yes. RC, that's the question mark. We probably have more RC in Lafayette that we do.
Uh, no, RC is, I mean, you, you, you have that little sliver right there, along, along Madison.
Some of those in there and there, yeah, right, left, east and west of the. Community park and then down toward, down towards the river and then out east along the north side of ninety nine.
But that's still up for future debate. If that would be legal to operate a dispensary in RC.
We would get to make the proposal of, you know, if we're gonna allow dispensary, we would allow dispensary, we specify. It's, it could be, we was recommend that it be allowed in C one, we recommend that it would allow in C two, we recommend it be allowed in RC. Or conversely, we would recommend it not, whichever.
Sure, yeah. And anything coming out of tonight's meeting? Before you also, after you set that date, depending on how this conversation goes, if I need to get additional maps for the next meeting. Um, for the public hearing, I can make sure those provided. So however that looks, I'll make sure anything that you present tonight is valid, it's legal. And then I would make, I would get maps of those made for what I would think is how you would maybe wanna look at going forward. Um, at the public hearing or, you know.
Do we, do we know of, of communities our size, their experience with marijuana? Sales, their shops, you know, what, what information do we have with their experience? Um.
Amity just opened one up, uh, this past weekend or two weeks ago. I heard, I, I heard it, it did a major, it did a major opening. People were excited. Dundee, um, I think you have a, uh, when I look at what can happen in Lafayette. I've heard like the appeal in there, um, and like it's very, very laid back. It's very, it's not like a dirty place. Um, I would, I would think that there would be some standard set for something coming in that would hopefully have that same, um, that same pride and love. Of, you know, the ones that we have in Dundee and Amity. Um.
Can we, can we anticipate? We do the public hearing, can we look back or able to look back on those communities' experience and? And look at what their process was, how people approached it, uh, the debates and everything. And could anticipate what we might hear with the public debate here?
Um, I could provide, um, in the staff report, maybe some. I've talked to different city management, city administrators, and most of them have had their regulations in place since the twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen vote. Um, so some of them have tweaked it here and there. Um, but most people have seemed to have observed it all at once at the beginning. For that shared revenue or have trickled here and there. So I will, I will try to get some uh feedback. For the next staff report and maybe provide that ahead of time so you can at least, um, have that for consumption.
Okay, and there might be something in, you know, the. I think based on your questions, Stephen, there might be something in the public record from those communities.
Okay.
Who, as far as their planning or city council.
Research that.
That, even if you could, you know, for something like that, even if you could simply pull together. A list of, hey, Amity had. Uh, whether it's city council or planning, they, they, the public records exist and it's look at. This state, this state, this state. So it's, it's not, it doesn't need to report that way if that could be provided.
You can do your own research then.
You, you, you provide the targeted information so we can then go in and, and take to it ourselves.
Yeah.
Thereby saving you a ton of work.
Yeah, that was more, the more information we can have and we can anticipate questions, we can be. Uh, better prepared for this public hearing.
Right.
We have people.
Like, as I'm sitting here thinking, it's like, you know.
Yeah.
I have.
I mean, I don't, I don't foresee anybody coming today, but I think once we make it known that there's a public hearing.
I would expect, you know.
You, you, I would assume you'd see members of the business community residents for and against, I mean, or, you know.
That's what we're, that's what we're.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And what we wanna, and yeah, we wanna look at whose for it. What are the benefits that they have found? What are the negatives that they have been told that have turned out not to be true? Who are those that are against it? Why are they against it? What are their negatives? What information do they have that supports that negative conclusion and what evidence exists? That runs counter to that, that negative conclusion. So it's kind of like. Two different coins and both sides of each coin.
Yeah.
So that, you know, you, you build a complete picture. Cause I, I, I know, and this goes back to the years. Because marijuana has been illegal in this country for so long, any report that you go looking for. Is, has, from the start of that report, if it's been funded by the government, is. Marijuana is bad. Now go looking for information that supports that conclusion, which is presented under the form of, here's a scientific study. That's not a scientific study.
Yeah, yeah.
Not, 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 no.
Yeah, you, you need a general, you need generations of data to really support a scientific study.
And for a scientific study, you never presume the conclusion. Might sit down and say, we think it's gonna be bad. Or we think it's gonna be good, but then you go out and start finding out the information and the information you find. You're going to find that information and it's going to start falling in one of those two camps. And at the end of the day, when you get, when you have a thousand pieces of data and they go, here's a thousand pieces of data. We think something's bad. Of those thousand pieces of data. Here's a hundred and fifty that say it's bad. That's what everybody's been pointing to, but hey, what about these other? Eight hundred and fifty that are not paid any attention to, but they all point in the direction that there's good. In which case. The conclusion that it's bad turns out to have been a false assumption all along, cause the data doesn't support it.
Yep.
But it can go the other way too. So, but yeah, then I guess I, as I sit here thinking, I'll think out loud. That's okay, it's just. Do we legally even need to, other than for a school, do we legally need to have a buffer around parks?
Nope, the only requirement from the state, oh, LLC and the guidance, one thousand foot buffer around washer. And that's the only barrier that is mandated by the state. Minus the five hundred foot reduction, but even if you tried to, I mean, Seventh Street extension, I don't know if you consider that a major barrier. Um, or at least getting through the neighborhoods to get to the commercial corridor, I could. There's definitely probably some zigzag and then jigsaw. Um, but that would be up to the state. But I would think the thousand foot barriers, you know, the, the one to go by because.
Even, even, even if you went to five hundred, you would still have, you know.
Yeah.
If they can, if, if it's five hundred and they can walk, they can walk a thousand feet, you know, I mean. There comes a point where you're walking through city streets, does that really serve as a buffer? When people, you know, and particularly when if you look at the east end of town now, there's the crosswalk. There that people will use, particularly school age children. So if there was something located on the east side of town, let's assume there was. Chances are they're just gonna walk by it every day. Is that a problem? I, I, you know. I, it either is going to be for those that are predisposed that way or it's not. You know, so. So from that point, I kind of start going down the path of, okay, if we wanna make it semi, or if we wanna try to go down the path of. At least allowing a business opportunity, doesn't mean it will happen. Do we need a, do, do, do we need a buffer around the parks? Do we need a buffer around the daycares? We legally have to have a buffer around washer, a five hundred foot buffer would likely be quite sufficient. And, you know, I'm guessing that we'd have to look at state law, but uh, the question then is, okay, for those people that live within five hundred feet. Is there a property that state law make the distinction of, you know, consumption on their own property because. But if it's, if it's true business, just business location and selling of the products.
Yeah, retail only.
Retail only. And. If I were to take the most liberal open approach, it would be allow it C one, C two, RC and uh. The five hundred foot buffer around washer to be state requirements. And then the other areas open, knowing full well that laws already exist as far as from a consumption standpoint. Thou should not be some, consuming this product in a park. It would be on the same exact level as alcohol and consumption. And leave it at that. That keeps it simple too.
I would change just one thing to yours. Instead of the five hundred foot around washer, leave it as a thousand feet, cause it doesn't obstruct anything near. A bye bye state law and that could maybe persuade someone for or against any motion.
I, 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 yeah, I, I, I see the point. And there's nothing, I guess there's nothing that says if a thousand foot buffer is put in place and something changes in the city. It could be adjusted in the future. So it could go either way. So, okay, I, I, I would.
And you asked a question at the beginning, I think you asked a question about the financial impacts.
Yeah.
We did not have an answer on that. Do we have?
I don't think, no, 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 no.
Okay.
Every, every, so. After this, after a public hearing, and depending how a motion were to go at the next meeting, if there's a motion to approve to bring to the city council. The city council then goes through their, their, their public hearing process and. Then we would work together on what a tax check would be like in town. You know, I know, I know Newburgh has one of the highest in the state. You know, but I also know some areas in the city have, have one of the lower ones in the state. Um, and I think that's a discussion that myself and the city attorney and staff would have to have and get, get sufficient data on. Um, I can provide some of that maybe at the next meeting, but I think that's more of a policy discussion than it is.
Yeah, and then I guess we are, you're, I was, I'm curious about the revenue, your interest, but it's, it's like, you know. At least have some idea of. The impact it might have, and I'll, I'll play both devil's advocate and. Positive impact it might have on Lafayette, okay, cause we have tax revenue and a different stream of revenue coming into the community. I don't think at the immediate facility there would ever be any significant problems. The only thing that I can even possibly think of is, you know. Is, is the vagrancy, but the potential risk of uh theft. Occurring in what I would consider armed theft or break in that could potentially put. Uh, shall we say bystanders at risk. Because you're talking about businesses that are all cash. And it is not uncommon to hear stories of, they do all cash, they cannot use a traditional bank. And therefore they get stuck with having two, three, four hundred thousand dollars on premises. And that presents a juicy target for.
Yeah, yeah.
And that again goes to finding the data to, you know, what, what supports whether arguing pro or con. You know, the, the communities with dispensaries have seen with crime with, um, you know, things along that line.
Vagrancy in the area especially.
Yeah, yeah.
I do know some locations take debit card now. I think they, like, uh, but like, it's like an ATM thing or something you gotta do with a debit card. I don't think they're doing, I, I think credit cards are done at a federal level. So they can't do that, but I know some, some, some of them do like debit cards and you gotta like ATM transaction. So some are, most of them, most of them are gonna be a cash business, you know, which is unfortunate because of the opportunities that it presents.
Yeah, cause they're right next to me. Like we said, Dundee has one, Amy just opened up one.
McBevill's got a, McBevill's got four or five.
Oh, yeah.
I think two or three.
Yeah, nothing in Carlton.
Nothing in Carlton, Dayton, no. Nothing in Dayton, nothing in Yamhill.
Nothing in Dayton, Carlton and Gaston.
Yeah.
Okay. I would say all three of those aren't major, no major run, uh, major roads go through it either. I guess maybe gas, Carlton does, yeah.
And Dayton's actually quite, they have quite a bit going on in their poor area right now, a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're devil's advocate, you know, that's probably the questions you're asking are exactly what we're gonna hear. So if we can anticipate those and, and have that information, even though we may not respond. We will say, okay, this has been forward, here's pros and cons.
And if we can find something, that would be great. On the other hand, you know, it's like, I have, I have been into, you know, walked in. Perused the products at various dispensaries myself. Looking at them and, you know, I can tell from the stores I've been in, you know, they've all been clean, they won't need, the staff has all been, you know. Friendly and courteous, so it's like.
They gotta do background checks, I think, to those people who work there, cause it's like alcohol, I mean, there's gotta be.
There, there's something here and, you know, judging by the people that I have seen walking in there being patrons, it's like. But you're talking about a bunch of people that are just basic ordinary people, they're looking for, you know, whatever their product is, you know.
Middle class, upper class, look, I mean, it's just like alcohol.
You don't get the impression that it's people that are, you know, out there to cause problems to speak of, you know.
So I think really, what really, what coming out of this is, um, the, the public hearing and if there's any additional maps that we need to gather. Um, obviously ahead of the next meeting, I have some, I have some deliverables to work on for the commission ahead of time, but, um. I think that's kind of where we're at. I mean, unless there's anything major that I need to go back outside of. Um, you know, the targeting, uh, the targeting data on some of the meetings, you know, tax revenue stuff, business development issues, theft, et cetera. Um, unless there's a different map that I need to get. I can still provide these next, but I'm gathering from the, I'm gathering from the commission that the five hundred foot barriers. Probably not something.
For the elementary school specifically?
Yeah, I think that's something that would probably, you, you wouldn't entertain, but I don't, I mean.
Well.
I would, I would entertain it. It's, it's an option, it's okay.
I would entertain that as an option, but if we were, if we, I guess if we were to provide a summary tonight, it would be, uh. C one, C two, RC, yes.
Yep.
Allow, does. Does that make sense? Okay, so basically of all of our commercial, we allow, uh. Our washer and elevator, definitely we'll have a buffer. Let's, let's open the dis, open the conversation with a thousand foot mark. But certainly make it known that if we wanna entertain five hundred, we're more than willing to do that. Uh.
But that just takes it out of the commercial district, wouldn't it?
Well, no, it's just, just a buffer, right? It would take it out of the commercial district, but. Honestly, unless something happens like, um, like, uh, Commissioner Moeller said, unless something happens in the next twenty or twenty-five, thirty years and there's a major zoning change. Um, we can always go back to that type of thing.
There's, but there's the buffer line. Thousand foot.
It's like, as the March.
Oh yeah, my pioneer loop. Yeah, all right, but.
And then.
Still can entertain it though.
So entertain, and then as far as the, I would say parks and daycare. We had opened the discussion and no buffer around those areas. Because parks already have, are, would, would already be covered. With consumption, the quote of alcohol, so that's covered and the. Users of the facilities of daycare are not within the age range or group of people that. Would be trying to. Hit a marijuana establishment. That's not to say that somebody's five year old son or daughter couldn't run out the front door and. Into the business next door, but it wouldn't matter. Into the business next door, but it wouldn't matter what's there, they would just do that anyhow, so. Child on the loose.
So. So what I'm gathering, and then there's no, there's no decisions tonight, this is only gonna be. Prepared ahead of the, the, the public hearing, things can change at any time.
It's kind of, here's the opening.
Yeah, I, I, I'll go, um, to the cog, I'll get a map made of C one, C two. I'll, I'll double, triple check RC, there's no regulations on that, and then a buffer zone of a thousand. And then, um. A buffer zone of five hundred.
Just.
Citywide, not in the context of Zoom, but a citywide map with just these two, one of each.
No, I'm, I'm saying a thousand bucks on washer, but for citywide, all the other places.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Correct.
No buffer.
So I would, I would get a map like this made with just one thousand with washer, I have five hundred around there. Okay.
For scale, yes.
Perfect.
Yes, perfect.
Um, okay, so then the only, so coming out of that, um. For, um, if, if, if the motion wants to be had, um, establishing. October nineteen, twenty twenty-three. As a public hearing for the discussion, for a public hearing on the topic of retail marijuana establishments. And amending the Lafayette development vote. Okay, or you could just follow the new business and just said, put the date in front of that. Amending.
Oh, okay, then, you know, we'll, we'll make a motion to open a public hearing on October nineteen. With regarding discussion of marijuana retail establishments at City of Lafayette. Uh, with the opening discussion surrounding, uh, limits and choices as discussed in tonight's work session.
Thank you, Chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, so for clarity, the second.
I'll take it.
Okay, well, obviously next meeting is October nineteenth. Now, we met tonight, it's starting at six thirty as opposed to seven.
Yeah, I, if we can keep it that way or even, I can do six, six thirty, it's completely whatever up to you. I felt seven was kind of late for some of us, but I, I mean, that's completely up to the board.
I will, six thirty works for me. It's a good work for me as well.
Six and six thirty, better.
Is better, okay, then let's. Let's then.
Continue with six thirty.
I left house at six twenty-two, thinking. No, 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 just I get done with work and then, you know. Gotta take care of a few things at the house, food. Better half and all that wonderful stuff, so, but no, six thirty works just fine, so let's go six thirty. It works.
He's because we already know there's not one September.
Correct, because we, we need thirty-five days to get with the state. So, and now unless something happens before, between it and now, you will all know ahead of time. Various requests, any, any type of thing that comes up in the next, but I don't.
Cause you've got the, the, uh. We have to, you know, the business regulation code would have to be, if it was not included in the motion, that business regulation. Would have to, the code is some, we should. Do as well. And then the only other thing I can think of, if there's time at the next meeting for the rest of you. I don't think we have an officially designated vice chair, that's. Been on my mind, we, we should have one. So we should have a. Vote or election amongst ourselves with regard to a great hearing. See, we have a volunteer for vice chair. Any other questions, comments, business?
Oh, I, 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 I got a couple of things real quick.
Okay.
Um, FYI, I, I, I mentioned to the members on the dais, uh, we're gonna be pretty active over the next year or so. We have a short term rental survey. That's on our website and online, so if you know anybody who's interested, I would prefer anybody interested at all. Pros and cons, please fill out that survey. Um, we're also gonna be talking, um. Food and, uh, mobile food, uh, carts and trucks in the next few months, and then I know there's also talk. Um, uh, and I mentioned before the meeting. STRs. And there's something else that's slipped my mind. We were talking about it too.
Food carts.
Food carts, short term rentals. And now the third thing, there's a fourth thing. It'll come back to me.
Something about HOA, we talked about.
Oh, well, no, that's something else.
Maybe that's what we were thinking of though, but.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, so there's gonna be items coming along and thank you all for your service.
At two in the morning, you'll remember.
I'll leave it up to you.
Okay, so since those items are coming up. Sometime, of course, next year. I believe those will be interesting. How long is the survey gonna be?
Uh, the, the short term rental survey is open till September fifteenth. It's in English and Spanish. There's a QR code right out here, it's online, it's on the app. Um, we're getting a lot of great feedback so far, um. So, um. Cities unable to regulate or not, I mean. If there's Airbnb's at times, we just, there's no regulation mechanisms, the only thing allowed in town are bed and breakfasts, those go through like a site development review. Um, and so these are discussions that we may have, um, if the surveys may tend to favor bringing them in town. Now, they say, no, we're not completely, completely against it, survey doesn't work out that way, I'd let the city council know. Um, and I'm sure the city council, they, they wanted a lot of feedback on that because of how contentious short term rentals are in the community across the country. And there are some cities that have been scaling back because their, their cities becoming so overwhelmed with these short term rentals. But there's some great questions on there that talk about segmenting and allowing whatnots, so.
Terry Park, that was another thing.
Yes, and, and some of the park stuff we're gonna have, we have it coming up, Terry Park.
Yeah.
Park planning and a lot of, a lot of master planning coming up in the next couple of years.
Conference plan.
Yeah, yeah, master plan, we got, we got so much stuff working on, so, sorry, guys.
That's okay, we're here. So gee, with the, the city sales on short term rentals, that means there's no regulation. So anyhow. Uh, interesting, okay, well, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Let's conclude our meeting for tonight.
Were we saying there are no Airbnbs in town right now?
There are.
Oh, there are.